Good evening and welcome. It is 6:30 on Monday, July the 26th, and I'm calling to order the Planning Commission for tonight. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually by using Zoom and in person while following social distancing guidelines. As Chair, I'll be leading the Planning Commission meeting, and the public is welcome to participate when invited throughout the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person or join via Zoom. If attendees experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. This is fix the issue. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at BurnsvilleMN.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available for viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit testimonies, I encourage you to email comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to HTTPS://zoom.us/join and typing in the meeting ID 998-1777-5662. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which items you plan to speak to. You may also call in the meeting. We have a phone number at 651-372-8299. Excuse me. Again, use meeting ID 998-1777-5662. For each public hearing, I will open up a time when the callers may speak to that item, and we'll give more instructions at that time. Your call will be muted until then. Please note there may be a slight delay due to differences in technology. If speaking by phone, mute your computer since there may be a delay and an echo effect. Now we move on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. Do I have any motions to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Wallace moves. Any second? Commissioner Anderson?
I'd like to second.
Moved by Commissioner Wallace, second by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Seeing none, it was unanimous. We had a meeting on July the 12th, and our minutes were included in the packet you received. Any changes from staff?
No changes.
Any changes from commission? Can we have a motion to accept the minutes from that July 12th meeting? Commissioner Wad?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Braddock. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Getting unanimous. With that all being said and done, on to number three on the agenda. We have a public hearing for application of Northland Paving LLC for conditional use permit to allow the open storage used within the Gateway Industrial Zone, also known as G.I.H., for the installation of above-ground fuel tanks at 12450 Beard Avenue South. Looks like it will be our planning commissioner Deb Gueros leading us on that. The floor is yours, Ms. Gueros.
Thank you, commissioners. The applicant is here this evening, Kaye Klenfelter, so kindly came in. They are actually a new business that is moving to Burnsville from Lakeville, so we're very happy to have them here. Unfortunately, they found out that they needed a conditional use permit for these above-ground storage tanks, so they have already made application for their building permit and then are just holding until this conditional use permit is processed. So with that, the subject site is in the city's most heavy industrial area, oldest part of the city, zoned G.I.H., which is our Gateway Industrial Heavy Zone. And then on the right is an aerial photo, and you can see the site is in yellow, or circled in yellow, and then there are exterior storage uses that are very common and prevalent within this part of the city. And this just gives a bigger picture. To the north is the landfill site, and then various industrial, again, heavy industrial activities. What they would like to do is to have three fuel tanks located on the northwest corner of the building, as shown here in a 10-by-40 area. And this graphic with their building permit, it shows where those three tanks would be. And these are standard tanks that you would see for propane, et cetera, so your standard tanks. The site area is 1.2 acres. The building is existing at 12,450 square feet. They have 92% impervious surface. The impervious surface coverage is existing. They're not making any changes to it, so it's considered to be legal, nonconforming, as is. Again, green space, existing is 8%, and that also wouldn't meet the current ordinance today, but they are not making any changes, so that is an existing condition. They do, however, because the parking area is small, which is basically to the east of the building, have over the 3% green space standard around the parking, and they're at 18%. And building perimeter landscaping is usually 50%. The existing condition is 34%. The existing parking on site is 13. The ordinance would require 12 stalls. One of the items that we just wanted to note for the applicant and the Planning Commission is the survey did indicate this as well, but the site, which has the pin located in it for that building, is partially within what is considered to be the 2% flood event. This is not something that is traditionally required for folks to get flood insurance, but flooding could occur, and there could be up to a foot of flooding to occur. Where they're showing the propane tanks, those will not be affected by the flood plane. With that, staff is recommending approval of the application, just subject to the one standard condition that they obtain a building permit, and they would so happily like to get that, and they're ready to go as soon as this application is considered by the City Council. With that, I can stand for questions.
I'm sure it is. Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for Ms. Gueros? Commissioner Wad?
Thank you for your presentation. This seems like a no-brainer. I'm just curious, are there other businesses around there that have similar above-ground fuel storage tanks, just out of curiosity?
Yep. As a matter of fact, the business, let's see, directly to the north, I don't know that we can see it on here, but they actually, they've got fuel tanks right in the same vicinity along the property line. Very common out here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Anderson?
I noticed on one of the previous slides, it showed concrete pillars surrounding it. Those are just for safety, so no safety concerns, anything like that from where it's being located?
Yes, they are ballards that get installed, yep, just so no one runs into the tanks.
Just making sure.
Any other questions from the commission? A couple of questions I have. One, obviously, is, it sounds like one foot of flooding, that's not going to affect these tanks at all. This is really an open and closed case. Okay, well, with that, this is a public hearing, so I want to open up the public hearing here at 6:38. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may step up to the podium and give us their name and address. Also, anybody on Zoom or on the phone lines can certainly let the moderator know that they would like to speak to this issue. So it doesn't look like anybody's on the phone for this particular issue, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:39. So I move it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Braddock?
Motion to approve.
Okay, with that, we would need you to read off the actual motion.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's fine.
A motion to approve, staff recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the conditional use permit to allow above-ground fuel tanks to be installed northwest of the building at 12,450 Beard Avenue South, subject to the following conditions. A building permit shall be obtained from the city.
Very good. Commissioner Braddock has moved, made a motion. Any seconds? Commissioner Wad?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, it sounds like we're all set, and this will move to the City Council meeting next Tuesday.
Actually, next week, because of Night to Unite, the City Council meeting will be on Monday night instead, and the meeting starts at 5:30.
5:30.
Same place here? Yep. Same exact place.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
All right. With that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. And that is a public hearing for South Metro Auto Plaza LLC for Conditional Use Permit Amendment to allow an open sales slash rental use within the B4 Highway Commercial Zone for the sale of vehicles at Captain Transport and Recovery, 1800 Highway 13 West. Looks like it is you again, Deb, so your floor is yours.
Thank you. We have an applicant who has owned the property, admitted the site since 2014. The building was constructed before, many years before, and actually, when the applicant came in in 2014, they planted the site and ended up doing some removal of some of the bituminous and hard class V area. So they brought the site into compliance with the green space requirements. And what they would like to do, they are a towing company, primarily when you have an owner, such as an apartment owner or maybe a business owner, and someone leaves a vehicle on the property, they would call Captain Towing or the applicant to come out and get the vehicle and then bring it back to the site. And they store it for a period of time, and then usually, the owners will come and they need to pay to be able to get their vehicle back from the impound lot. And sometimes, however, they do not come, and what has had to happen in the past is that, in those cases, then, the applicant does not get paid, basically, for their services, and they have to pay someone then to get rid of the vehicles, either for scrap or take them someplace else for sale. So what they are requesting is to use five of the existing parking spots on the southeast corner of the site for open sales rental use, which would be to allow up to five vehicles to be parked there for sale. They are not interested and avinicated in their application. They're not interested in being a used car dealership, per se, but in order to meet the state license requirement, they would need this conditional use permit to allow this use. And this just shows, again, the five parking stalls in this site. It is also in the drinking water protection overlay district. However, it's not anticipated that there will be any issues from what is being proposed, as it's very similar to what they're operating out there now. The building out here was constructed in 1960 and then planted in 2014, and as I said, the applicant has been operating out here since then. Their overall site green space is 25%, so that conforms to the ordinance. And then green space within the parking area, because they have a large area of green around that parking space, they're at 18% for green space. The recommendation in this case is, again, we are recommending approval of the CUP amendment, subject to three conditions. Number one, previously approved conditions of other conditional use permits remain in effect. Two, this is a requirement that is a standard right out of the open storage, or excuse me, open rental sales part of the ordinance, that only non-commercial vehicles can be sold from the site. And three, that no onsite auctions are permitted. With that, I can stand for questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Gueros? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So with that, we'll move to the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:44. Anyone wishing to speak to this issue may step up to the podium. Otherwise, we do have somebody on Zoom. Kayhan Saran?
He's the owner of the business.
He's the owner of the business, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Saran, would you like to speak to us? It says he does not wish to speak, and that's okay. That's fine. Sounds like a pretty, yeah, we're intimidating. With that, I will close the hearing at 6:45, and I'll move it to the commission. Any discussion on this issue? Commissioner Anderson?
I mean, to me, it sounds pretty cut and dry. It's, all makes perfect sense that it's too bad they've had to pay to get rid of the cars in the past, but at least this helps them to recoup some stuff. So, I mean, I would like to make a motion that we recommend to the City Council approval of the CUP amendment to allow the open sale rental used for up to five parking spaces of 1800 Highway 13 West, subject to the following conditions. The conditions of the previously approved CUPs shall remain in full force and effect, only non-commercial vehicles shall be sold, and no onsite auctions shall be permitted.
Very professionally done, Commissioner Anderson. Thank you for that motion. Do I have a second to that motion? Commissioner Wallace?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Wallace. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, it sounds like we have a deal. Thank you again, Monday, I believe that is 5:30, August the...
Uh, 2nd, I believe.
2nd, yes, I believe that's right. And with that, we'll move on to number five, and that's a public hearing for Capstone Quadangle for preliminary and final plat of a two-lot subdivision to be known as Capstone Quadrangle 2021. Addition, variance for principal structure and parking setback for proposed Lot 1, variance for setbacks, parking, and landscaping for existing conditions on proposed Lot 2, and conditional use permit for two buildings on one lot to construct two office warehouse buildings. The vacant site between Dupont Avenue and Lady Bird Lane, also known as Assaford Land, Assaford Land. Anyway, our city planner, Sarah Madden, is here to speak to this. Ms. Madden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. So this site, what we'll be talking about this evening, is in the industrial area that's generally located north of Highway 13 and west of 35W. It's referred to as the Minnesota, or part of what's referred to as the Minnesota River Quadrant in a lot of city documents and plans, and in the comprehensive plan, also known as the North Gateway District. So some of the goals of the North Gateway District are for the long-term planning of the site for some future industry, kind of a technical, maybe medical area where we would see a higher development than what's currently there. But it is a long-term plan within the comprehensive plan. So some details about the proposal that you'll be seeing this evening, the zoning of the site, gateway industrial medium, land used again, is this Minnesota River Quadrant. Office warehouse is a permitted use in the underlying zoning district. Along with the plat and the variance proposal, the conditional use permit this evening would be for the fact that for more than one principal building on a lot, the conditional use permit is required. So the development site, where the bulk of the plans you'll be seeing this evening are related to, is the proposed Lot 1 and the plat, just shy of 17 acres. And the second site, or the second lot in the plat, is an existing self-storage site, just shy of three acres. So all of the lots in this plat are existing within two different industrial subdivisions dating back to like late 60s, early 70s. The plat would be combining them again into one with a little bit of some lot line adjustment from that self-storage facility into the new development site. There was a kind of a small triangle of land, not a straight line that is being conveyed as part of this. The variances, there are variances requested for both lots, for the development site and for the existing conditions on the self-storage facility site. The self-storage use and facility itself is legally nonconforming. It's not really proposed to change with this application. Staff recommended the variance route as their lender was concerned about creating more non-conformities as a result of the conveyance, and the variance request is not necessarily all conditions on the site, but those that are influenced by lot line changes, which is what is happening when one lot is plotted to another. So the site itself has a long history of soil processing, a lot of dirt storage that kind of predates incorporation of the city of Burnsville. For the zoning district and the Minnesota River Quadrant as a whole, in the early 2000s, a lot of work was done behind the scenes with city staff and our council member and the public at the time to come up with this idea for the Minnesota River Quadrant vision in early 2000s. Kind of working through that because of the poor soils and a lot of lots in this area, we received, or the city received legislative approval in 2008 to be able to have soil-related TIF tax increment financing districts. And then later, again, city ordinances to allow soil remediation through mining or excavation and stockpiling in 2012. And Assaford, who owns all of these properties, aside from the self-storage site and a few others in the city, they were granted their first soil-related interim use permit in 2013 for this site and some others in the general area for that stockpiling of the dirt that they would use to both remove bad dirt and put in the good dirt. So the Capstone project did receive TIF approval earlier this year to prepare for development of the site, related to that soils district. So they're coming forward now to prepare this plat and to construct the two buildings and need the land use approvals related to that. So shown here is the plat of the subdivision. So as mentioned earlier, the proposal is a two-lot subdivision, about six parcels, or six parcels in the subdivision combined into two. The existing self-storage site would be the proposed Lot 2, which, I'll try to circle for you, so over here, on kind of on the curve of Lady Bird Lane, and then the new development site, a large, again, nearly 17-acre site. So, again, the development site is primarily the focus of tonight's review and the plans attached to the report. The site would contain two new 115,880 square feet industrial office warehouse buildings. The plat itself does meet the lot size and width requirements of the zoning ordinance. So to kind of move into the, this shown here is the grading plan, but to show some of the variances that are proposed for the development site itself, there is a decrease to the side yard parking setback to 10 feet along the southwest property line. So the plans that are in the packet this evening are not attached to the cardinal directions. They've been shifted for convenience. But here, where the drive aisle enters the site, at its smallest distance is 10 feet from the property line, the side property line, as compared to 15 feet required by the zoning ordinance. As you can see, in the northern area, generally, this entire area is encumbered by some form of easement. There's an additional easement that runs down this direction for utilities, so a number of encumbrances on the site. So there is a decrease to the front yard setback along Lady Bird Lane to push the building closer in that direction due to the scope of the easements existing on the site. There's an overhead transmission line and Met Council easements for kind of some various utilities. Third variance for the development site, there is a zero lot line parking setback to the property line in this area, and that pavement is not necessarily highlighted on this plan because it is existing. It is the drive-out entrance to the self-storage facility. So both, actually, both sites will be receiving a zero lot line parking setback for the existing condition of this pavement, drive aisle access. So a number of variances are proposed on the self-storage site, and again, I just want to indicate that this site itself is not proposed to change, but for the conveyance of the small triangle of land to the new development site. So there's a decrease in the front yard parking setback along the northern property line of Lady Bird Lane, so it's a little confusing to see on this, but there is a decrease to front yard parking setback on the eastern property line of Lady Bird Lane here to 3.1, so it's a little bit hard to visualize again because the plans are shifted and not with the cardinal directions. There's the zero parking, zero lot line parking setback mentioned at the shared property line. In this location, there's a decrease in the front yard building setback on the northern property line for this building here is the closest point. And then there is a decrease in the front yard building setback to 28 feet, one inch, on the eastern property line, and that is primarily from this building here, which is their main entrance building. And then there is a decrease to the side yard building setbacks on the southwestern property line and the overall southern property line. So again, it's the buildings in this area. And then, as mentioned, the zero lot line parking setback, which, oh, sorry, I passed over that one, zero lot line parking that's shared, and then to allow 10% of the area to be landscaped. So the overall green space requirement for the underlying zoning district is 30%, and the existing condition of the site is 30%. And so those are the variances that are affected by lot line changing as part of that and overall lot size that is changing as well. So overall, in the variance guideline policy when reviewed, there were 12 positive, three negative, and four non-applicable factors. The property is, experiences practical difficulty from encumbrances of the easement areas that make up the big chunk of the property. Lot 2 variances are existing conditions, which we've seen some of these existing conditions variances recently, that the lot boundary and lot size were changing, so in coordination and communication with the applicant group, we, as staff, recommended that, to clear some of that up, they could request the necessary variances. So while the applicant is, the Capstone group, that there is, they are involved, the self-storage facility is involved in the application and has signed the necessary information. So staff would consider that per our policy and the zoning ordinance that the requests for the variances are reasonable. So shown here, to move forward and back to the new development site, so right here are the elevations that were proposed at the time of application that staff has been reviewing, and they do meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the underlying district. And there is a condition, which I'll mention a little bit later in the recommendations section of my presentation, that some changes be made as related to some of the requirements for receiving TIF financing. Their applicant has been working with staff throughout this period. We feel confident that this won't be an issue, but there may be some changes to these plans at the time of building permit that wouldn't come before the Planning Commission, but in their current phase, they do meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So shown here is the architectural site plan to try to indicate some of the parking and access to the site, so there are four access points, one on Dupont Avenue and three along Lady Bird Lane, of course, this larger central entrance to the loading dock area for truck access. With the site plan currently, there are 218 parking stalls proposed, so it does exceed ordinance requirements. Part of the way that parking is calculated is based on all uses in the building, so it's currently calculated what appears to be an estimate of 10% office. As for required parking, it is possible, since this is a speculative building, that the tenants that may move into it may have more than 10% or less than 10% office. And of course, we wouldn't know necessarily the number of tenants until the leasing phase was handled. So it is possible that more or less parking, probably, potentially more added to the site plan, so there actually are two areas on the plan where the applicant is showing that there may be a need for future parking, depending on the makeup of the uses inside the building. the building. Because this site has an existing interim use permit approval for soil remediation, the previous 2013 approval did include a tree inventory and evaluation worksheet. So, there is reforestation obligation that is applied to all of the parcels that are, you can see here on the slide. Not all of these parcels are part of this development, though. Any landscaping that is included in this proposal where we can get the tree values for the reforestation would be applied towards that obligation that is shared between the sites that were part of the original interim use permit for soil remediation, part of that approval. So, there is a condition in the recommendation section that we get more detailed information on the valuation of the trees on the landscaping plan so that we can keep our tally on staff's end for the, for the overall soil reclamation area. Shown here is the landscaping plan. Overall, 34% green space is proposed, meeting the city ordinance requirement of 30%. 13% of the parking lot proposed to be landscaping, meeting the 8% requirement for the underlying zoning district. And both sites, they are kind of a mirror of one another, show a 64% building perimeter landscaping, meeting the 50% requirement of the zoning ordinance. There is a condition that the landscaping plan be revised to incorporate some additional landscaping materials, kind of a final review of the landscaping plan. There were some notices that, that not all of the requirements may have been met based on the math that was used to calculate the overall landscaped area. And so, there is a condition that, that the landscape plan be revised and meet the zoning ordinance, so we're not trying to indicate what should be added to it, just that when we review it again, that we can redo the math and make sure that they can choose the categories of the tree or shrub planting that they would increase in order to meet that requirement. So, engineering considerations related to the application. So, site improvements, we did receive trip generation information, and the city engineer indicated that negligible increase in traffic volumes for the operation. There are easements from the former subdivisions that are going to be maintained in the new plat, as well as easements that are proposed to be vacated at the city council hearing next week. Additionally, there are two retaining walls that are proposed in easements as part of the plan. The city engineer and the applicant group worked on some of these issues, and so there are two conditions kind of related to this. One is that the retaining walls on this plan to be removed from the metropolitan council easement, and the other is that an encroachment agreement is going to be prepared for those that remain in drainage and utility easements. And that is talked about a little more thoroughly in the engineering section. Overall, staff is supportive of the application, and we are recommending approval. I'm going to quickly kind of go over the conditions, which I tried to reference throughout this. The first is related to the exterior materials and that they be revised to meet the better or best standards, which is related to any project that receives like city or TIF approval. And again, the applicant has been working with us. We actually saw a new plan today that wasn't able to make it in here to the PowerPoint, didn't meet that deadline, but they're working on it, and we don't foresee that that will be an issue to meet. Two, again, as mentioned, the plans be revised to move the retaining wall out of the Met Council sanitary sewer easement or obtain approval from the Metropolitan Council. Third, a tree removal permit is required prior to tree removal work being conducted on the site. Four, landscaping plan be revised to illustrate the, this is the monetary value of trees so that we can calculate the reforestation and keep track of that for future development as well. Number five, again, the revised landscape plan to meet the plant installation requirements of the zoning ordinance, that we can check those categories that are required there. Six, location of trash handling facilities shall be identified on the plans for building permits submittal, so when we find out the tenants and their uses, that we would know where the trash handling, whether it was interior or exterior, and just location of it. Since it's a speculative building, we don't have that information yet. Seven, sign permit required to installation of any permanent signs on the property. Number eight, the revised photometric lighting plan to be provided at time of building permit application. There were some areas that were slightly over at the property line, and again, this is one of those areas that we've discussed with the applicant group. We don't feel that this will be an issue for building permit application. Number nine, into the engineering-related conditions, that the engineering memo from June, any, anything that may be outstanding that it's addressed, a low-impact development management practices agreement executed and recorded, development fees paid to the city prior to the release of the plat for recording, and then again, that encroachment agreement for the retaining walls that are located in, with drainage and utility easements signed and recorded. Again, staff's recommending approval. This is a public hearing this evening. I can stand for questions, and members of the applicant team are available on Zoom and in the audience.
Great, thanks, Ms. Madden. Commission, Sarah Lloyd with the Engineering Department is here as well. If you have any questions from Ms. Lloyd or Ms. Madden, please let me know. Commissioner Wallace?
Just a, you spoke a little bit about the easements, and if I recall correctly, back in the early 2000s, to some properties just north of this, there were some right-of-way easements. Were there any right-of-way easements that are going to conflict with this property at all?
That's a great question. No, there are, there is accumulated right-of-way in some properties, as you mentioned, north of this area. This particular area of property is not associated with those roadway improvements, and there's no right-of-way as part of the dedication of this plat.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for city staff? I'm not seeing none. I, personally, I'm excited about this. When I started on commissions back in 2013, we started this whole remediation thing and thought, geez, by the time they're able to build on, it'd be forever, and here we are. So, this is great. I am excited that we're being able to do this. With that, we do have the applicant here. I'm going to open up the public hearing at 7:05, and I believe, sir at the podium, if you could state your name and the, your home address for the record.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Mike Faber. I'm a principal with Capstone Quadrangle. We're the developer of the project. I also have my architect with us on Zoom today. So, for the public hearing portion, I'm meaning to just be available for questions, but I'm sure there'll be things to discuss when the plant commission does its deliberation.
Okay.
Address, N17W24222, Riverwood Drive, Waukesha, Wisconsin, 53188.
Well, thank you. Any questions for the applicants, Commissioner? Commissioner Watt?
Not, not so much a question, but a comment. It looks like a, a nice project and a nicely, a couple of nice buildings kind of shoehorned between all the easements, so I think it looks great. So, thank you for, we look forward to, to having this proceed.
Thank you. I think my architect would agree, maybe even not just shoehorned, but surgically inserted. Very, very, the most complicated project I've ever undertaken.
Nice job.
Mr. Ankle, is there anything you would like to talk to the commission about?
Nope. I'm Scott Hinesley. My home address is 580 Prairie Avenue in Glen Allen, Illinois, 60137. And no, I'm happy to answer any questions, add any artistic and architectural insights as it relates to the planning and the execution of these buildings.
Any questions, Commissioners? Mr. Hinesley? Seeing none, thank you both for joining us today. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:07. All right, Commissioners, discussion on this project. Commissioner Watt?
Actually, I do have a question for city staff, and it relates to the elevations and the better and best requirement that comes along with the tax increment financing. If I read the report correctly, if for some reason this project does not use tax increment financing, then their elevations can be as they're presented, at the, kind of the lower standard. Is that correct?
That's correct. They do meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance, so if there was some reason that the TIF was not utilized, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioner? Commissioner Watt?
Okay, I'm up again. I was going to make a motion if nobody else had any comments or anything else they wanted to say, okay.
The applicant looks like he has something to say.
It was just a question, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The staff recommendation on item number six refers to trash handling facilities being identified at the time of building permit submittal. And I did have a conversation with staff about whether the commission might consider changing that, not to the primary shell building and site permit application, but because, although I would certainly love to have tenants identified prior to putting a shovel in the ground, hopefully in less than 30 days, the trash handling facilities are more likely, and it will make more sense if that condition is prior to tenant improvement permits being pulled to do the individual build-outs for each tenant, because that's when we will learn what their trash requirements are, whether they're manufacturing and are generating a large amount of crating and those kinds of things, or whether they keep it indoors and only bring it out once a week or twice, twice a month if they have very low generation. So, we won't actually know the answer to that question until we do the individual tenant improvement build-outs as opposed to the shell construction.
That's completely understood. We have these recommendations or requirements on our buildings because we have, you know, we want to hide the trash facility, so we'd like to have them identified, but I'll hand it over to city staff if that is something that we can, is a negligible item.
Thank you, Chair. We've actually had this conversation after the publishing of the packet prior to the meeting, and we, we would be content if it was changed to reflect the tenant build-out rather than the shell build-out permit. There would be multiple permits required for this type of proposal, so we would gather it at the time of the tenant improvement.
It would certainly be our intent as well that whatever trash facilities and mechanism for handling refuses, it would be within the truck court, which in and of itself is already pretty well screened. So, some tenants generate enough that they have it at one of their dock positions, for example, as opposed to in a dumpster corral or something to that effect. Others keep it inside, but in any case, it will not be outside of the truck court.
All right, well, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Commission, any discussion on that? Commissioner Watt?
I'll continue with my motion and, and kind of with a modification to item number six. So, I move that we recommend to the city council approval of the preliminary and final plat, conditional use permit, and variances subject to the following 12 conditions, with a modification to number six to read something to the effect of, the location of trash handling facilities shall be identified on the plans at the time of tenant build-out, or tenant build-out permit submittal?
That would work.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm very impressed, Commissioner Watt, you did that on the fly. That's very good. Motion by Commissioner Watt. Do I have a second? Commissioner Anderson?
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Watt, second by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, that passes, and it will be on the August 2nd meeting at 5:30 for the city council. Thank you, guys, for showing up today, and thank you for choosing Burnsville. I really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you very much. We're very excited to begin, and in many ways, we feel a little bit like we're unofficial members of the economic development side of the city, because we're trying to bring new businesses to Burnsville, and we're optimistic about the likelihood that that'll happen relatively fast.
Really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. And with that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is updates. Staff, any updates for the commission?
Just a couple of things quickly. The city council did, or did end up approving the, the application for Amy Nguyen based on the recommendations from the planning commission. So, that, that was, it was quite a lengthy discussion. If you're interested, you can, you know, take a look at that, the council meeting if you'd like, but they were very supportive of the staff position. And then, your next meeting is most likely going to be August 23rd. The 9th, I believe, is going to be canceled because we have a couple of applications that we're kind of moving, so we know it'll be the 23rd, and heads up, but we think the, the next meeting on the 9th would be canceled. And that's it, thank you.
Great. Any updates from the commission? Seeing none, I will take a motion to adjourn. Commissioner, Commissioner Braddock?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner Braddock, any second? Commissioner Wallace?
I second.
That is so soon for these guys to be, going for the adjournment, but that's okay. Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Braddock, second by Commissioner Wallace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you for joining us tonight.